So let's call the meeting to order. And we will do the flag salute.
Okay, please, please join me and we're salute the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Into the.
Which stands.
One nation, under God.
And individual.
Justice.
Okay, so teleconference board meeting protocols.
Hey, very good. Again, for our board and for our public who are joining us tonight. This is the first time that we are using a webinar feature for Zoom, which is a, which will change our protocol just a bit, just a bit from what we've normally done. And all of our board members, cabinet, myself are on the screen. And on what, what we're going to do is as we've done in the past, our session is on Zoom webinar and it will be recorded. For those audience members who are joining us tonight, devices that you've used to join us have been muted. Public comment can happen in two ways. One is that if there were emails that were sent to Kuybok, executive assistant by noon yesterday, then we would be sharing that information tonight. And there, there were no emails that were sent for public comment for tonight. However, we also have another way to receive public comment. And this is where it's going to be a bit different from what we've done in the past. For our board meeting, there are no action items, but we do have pub, we do have a public hearing for one item. And so for teleconference, what will be happening is we will, if, if there are public members that would like to make a public comment, there is a hand raising feature that they can, they can access from the teleconference that they are viewing and that Kuybok and other assistants that are online helping us tonight can watch to see. Our thought is that we would, when we're ready and we, we get into the public hearing, we would provide some background for the board. And then when our board president asks for a public comment, that's when we will cue people again to raise, raise their hands. And then Kuy will unmute. She will call the name of whoever she has for public comment and unmute that person. And they will be able to make public comment for three minutes. So it's similar, just a little bit different because we are not using a chat feature. Our public who have joined us tonight that would like to make public comment, again, will raise their, raise their hands. And then what we also have in our protocol is if, if a board member loses connectivity, what we will do is we will delay the meeting for up to five minutes, check with those that are on and reconvene after five minutes. I think we've really maybe gone through that once so far and hopefully that will not happen tonight. So Board President, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Okay, so we are on item C, new business, which is 202.114. And it's the public hearing for the 2020, 2021 local continuity and attendance plan. So our LCAP.
Yep, same, same acronym, just a different, different title. Again, we will, we'd like to provide the board with, with some background and updates. And then again, I will turn it back to our board president in terms of just what will happen next, in terms of if you would like to see if there is public comment regarding this item. Before board discussion, we'll follow your lead on this tonight. What we do have is a learning continuity and attendance plan, rather than a three-year LCAP right now, that the LCAP has been postponed till the spring, where another three-year cycle will start. But what the state is requiring right now is this plan. And what we have done in the plan is work to consolidate, consolidate or integrate multiple plans that we have been working on through the pandemic into the summer, into early fall to meet the requirements of, of this local plan. The plan is organized by the relate, the required elements regarding the impact on our district with the pandemic, stakeholder engagement, continuity of learning factors, whether it be distance learning to technology, to safety factors, addressing learning loss, mental health and social emotional well-being, and increased or improved services for high needs learners. What we've done is we have, and in fact, when we sent the, released the board packet on Friday evening, as of that date, we had received feedback on the plan that was posted by 43 stakeholders. That has now increased to 66. And we will be summarizing the feedback for the board this evening. So what we have is we have three slides that we would like to show you. And Kuy will bring that up. And we'll go to the very first slide, Kuy, please. Again, we, what I'd like to do is just provide an update in the context of the plan. Donna Whitlock and, and our, our other directors will provide some information on some of the feedback. We would move to the public hearing. And again, there could be at that, after that public board, probably board discussion, along with direction to us, to myself and staff, and then next steps. So before, before we go to the next slide, what I'd like to say that in the plan itself, there, there, there is, there are multiple sections that talk about our progression of the reopening plan that we had worked, that the board had given us direction on. How it is that we would transition from distance learning where we are right now, that the state had required us, the county had required us to go into, and how we would move from that to move to on-campus learning when conditions permit and/or we proceed with an elementary waiver for our elementary schools. The next slide goes into a bit of detail about what we're calling a fall progression of what we're looking to do to gradually progress to on-campus services. What is happening in September and October is that we are working to finalize COVID-19 require, COVID-19 testing for employees and tracing procedures. We are working to finalize that in September as soon as possible. And what we are striving to do is work, well, what we are doing is we are working with Sacramento County Public Health on that. And that process may also be involving some type of agreement with multiple districts in Sacramento County. So we are working to finalize that element. The testing and tracing is, if you've had a chance to look at, at, and we've brought this up before, for what the state or the county is requiring for on-campus group or full campus services, having testing and tracing is one of the requirements. What's happening starting next week is that we are, we will begin to conduct one-to-one assessment of children on our school campuses. We will start with children who are English language learners and then begin possibly the next week with our children, some of our children who receive special education services. So we're working to begin that process next week, beginning for children who receive English learner, who are English learners. Communications will be going out to parents. And again, we've been working with training with employees and working with our unions as well as communicating those steps. In October and into November, as we're looking at the testing, we at this time have been reviewing the requirements that came at the state level along with the county to begin looking at how we can provide small cohort group services at all of our, at all of our schools. Even though right now on-campus student learning is not permitted unless a, a school district has a waiver, an elementary school has a waiver, the state is permitting and the county is permitting small cohort group services with a priority for children who receive special education services and also high needs learners that could include English learners, children who have been struggling with or fell behind with some of the distance learning efforts. The, the percentage of, of children who can be served without a waiver are up to or are not to exceed, excuse me, I'm just gonna say generally not exceeding 25% of school enrollment. And that we're looking at, at what we could do to support childcare arrangements, prioritizing essential school workers, but looking at what we could do for other parents within our school district as well. So our goal is to look at that possibly to start in October into November with that. Some of the ideas that we have begun to look at with the small group cohort work is that in addition to serving children, some of our highest needs children in special education, such as children who receive special day class services, that we could be looking, for example, at early literacy and ELD for children in TK grades two. That might be our starting point. But again, we are just at the beginning stages of looking at this. And we also want to have the testing and tracing in place before we start the small group on-campus services for that. We, we also are thinking that it may be time, and this is where, when our board is conducting discussion or, or has questions, we could, you know, we're thinking that it may be a good time to look at a survey again that would involve our parents, teachers, and possibly students. In November, December, you know, the, the goal is that we would be, and every day, you know, we're just testing the waters and looking at conditions and, and looking at state and county direction to see what on-campus services may be happening in November and December in, in trimester two, beyond what we're looking at for cohorts that could start in trimester one. It could be that because of conditions and board direction along with feedback and working with our unions, that we could be continuing distance learning with small group cohorts for on-campus support. Or we could be looking at where we at this point are, have transitioned to another level on our reopening plans, reopening school plan matrix that included where all children would be on campus, not necessarily every day depending on the model, but again, not also still following social distancing requirements. So this gives you a feel for the progression of what we're working to do starting right now in September. What happened on the next slide is that as we posted our plan, yeah, I think this is the most feedback that we've ever gotten on a, a plan that we posted on our, our website and available hard copy. Donna Whitlock, Director of Ed Services, would you please review with our board the feedback that we received on the plan? And you are muted?
Me. We, we've looked at all 66 of the families and parents that, that provided the feedback. And they roughly went, came, you know, really fell into three, these three categories. Satisfied, they just said that, you know, that the comments were that things are going great. They're happy with the way, you know, the way it is, the plan looks good. So they were satisfied with our current phase and policy plan. There was five of them that did state some concerns that you see there. Seventeen, really the, the focus of their feedback was on, you know, staying home, continuing with distance learning, really concerned about the, the health and safety conditions during the pandemic. And then 37 of those 66 respondents, you can read the feedback there below, just really felt that for a variety of reasons, and I put, you know, just kind of a, a sample of them. They really wanted their children to be back in school at least two days a week. You know, two to five days a week. So that was, that, those, that was the feedback that we got from our families. And like Karen said, it, it came in pretty rapidly also. But we closed the survey, I believe, yesterday at four o'clock.
So again, this is, this is not a, a meeting for board action tonight, but it will be an opportunity for the board to discuss and, and, and get clarification and provide direction. But in a public hearing session, it also is a time for public comment through the public hearing process. So President Malsen, I'm, I'm going to transition back to you in terms of what you and the board would like to do next.
All right, well, I'm trying to remember with public hearing. Should we do board discussion first and then do the public hearing? Is that how it normally went?
What would the board like to do on that? Would the board, it, it could be that we do public con, we open the hearing, public comment, and then board discussion if the board is comfortable with that?
Yeah, let's do that. So we'll open for a public hearing. And then we'll do board discussion. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so the public hearing is open? And do we have any?
Yes.
Discussions on the public comment?
Let's see, Kuy, Kuybok, do we have any? And I'll, I'll review for our public community members who have joined us tonight that you should, if you've joined us by teleconference, you should see a, an icon of a hand to raise your hand. And when you indicate that you would like to speak, then Kuybok and additional assistants are watching so that we can build a list of anyone who would like to provide public comment.
Board President Malsen, we have no request for public comment. Okay. All right, so then I guess I will close the public hearing and then open it up for board discussion.
And may I, may I just say this before the board starts? Is that Kuy, I realize that there could be some people that will join us as the board is going on, and please let us know if that happens when, when it's the right time.
Okay, I will do that, Dr. Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you. So board members, do you have any comments, discussion? My question, looking at the survey result, or looking at the, the district's plan, and I guess, and I know it's unknown, and that's probably gonna be the answer, but what is the probability of going back on campus with modifications for second trimester? Is there any buzz from the county or the states on any decisions?
Well, what I, what I would start with, and I certainly would like our colleagues to share and board members from, you know, what you are seeing. But I am aware that Sacramento County Public Health has approved elementary waivers for some schools already in Sacramento County. And I believe some additional schools, someone, I didn't have a chance to read thoroughly. Someone has just sent me some more information. So it does look like if the conditions, if we do not move out of the widespread level and it does, we, and we meet the criteria, working with public health, board direction, working with our unions, that that could be a way for us to return to on-campus, school-wide, if conditions permit that. That does require that, that we do have the testing and tracing in place along with, with reaching out to different groups. It's hard telling beyond that. If we move from tier one in terms of where we are right now in Sacramento County into tier two, a waiver is not required. Schools, all of our schools would be able to reopen. It is, I, I was gonna say, I'm gonna go off the top of my head, see if I can get this right. That it, a, a district would need to, the county would need to be in that, from purple to red for, I believe, three weeks before then districts would be able to open on campus. You know, we're looking, I was looking at trends this morning. It's just, again, hard, hard to know right now. But we are, you know, working to get all of the requirements shored up so that, you know, when the time is right and, and we're ready to go, that that's what we would be able to do.
Okay, well, I have another question because I've been doing some reading and reading the news articles. Why is it only K six that can get the waivers and not seven, eight and high school?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I was reviewing state and re-reviewing state and county documents today. And what I saw, and I believe it was in the state public health document, the rationale for elementary schools getting the approval has to do with the, what I'd call the, the level of risk of COVID-19, which appears to be less for younger children than for older. So that was, that was the initial rationale. That's, but it, so middle school, high school, you know, greater, say susceptible or, you know, greater risk associated at those grade levels compared to elementary.
Okay, interesting. Thank you. Do any of the other board members have any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple. Number one is where are we at in the, with the, with our waiver? Where, you know, exactly where? Are we close to getting one or have you heard anything from the county?
So what, what, what we have, what we're doing right now is pulling together the different areas that would be required to do a waiver. We have not submitted a waiver yet because we cannot meet all of the requirements. We need to have the testing, the testing and tracing is the one that we really, again, that that is the area that we really need to look at. And we also then would need to survey and reach out to parents, to our unions, to employees, to get feedback, which is part of, I think, the strategy even for serving groups of students, that we would want to do that survey so that we could bring that survey to you along with county public health. That's part of the application. Again, just to review, and you can see actually the evidence of what we have already that would be part of our application as I read through this because it is, these elements are part of the continuity plan that, that was, that has been posted. We need to, in our, in our plan that we would submit if we proceed with a waiver, and I'll just, I'll, I'll go through these elements. They're not, it's not too much, it won't take me that long. Is that first, we have to do consultation with labor organizations, parent organizations and community organizations about the elementary waiver. We certainly are in communication with different organizations, but not, not specifically for the waiver yet. And then the, these are the elements of the plan, working with Sacramento County Public Health that they would be looking at. They would look at our meeting requirements for cleaning and disinfection, for how we would support small group cohorts or group cohorts, how it is that we would be looking at safety when it comes to entering and movement around the school, that we have a process, procedures for face coverings and other essential protective gear. So far, everything that I'm, I'm reading to you is either done or it's in process. The cohorting, you know, again, we, we would get, I would say, if we're working towards small group support in October and November, whether we have a waiver or not, those are things we're gonna have to have in place for small group cohorts. What it is that we would do for health screenings, healthy hygiene practices. Then again, there are requirements related to tracing and testing, which we are, that's, that's the area right now that we're working. We really want to get that done this month. How it is, what procedures for physical distancing, staff and family training around the safety requirements, how it is that, what would trigger us from switching back to distance learning? And we have, we have our reopening, what I'd call our continuum that's there. But now we have criteria that the governor brought forward that would be a part of this process as well in terms of triggers. And then communication plans. So quite honestly, many of the areas that it would take to submit an elementary waiver, we can address those area, areas in the plan because they're in the continuity plan. But, but again, the biggest one that, well, I'd say the two biggest ones would be, would be our consultation with the groups specifically for the elementary waiver, which I have not done. And then secondly, making sure that we've got the testing and tracing in place to be able to do that. I do know that I spoke to a superintendent last week who was preparing to do an elementary waiver. And when the superintendent did a consultation with stakeholders, which included a survey, what came back was not what he and others expected. Was that, and I, it's, you know, again, I'm, I, I'm not ready to say what I think would happen here. I cannot do that. But what ended up happening in, in the district this superintendent was in was that it was very clear that, you know, the community that he worked in, that they were not, they, they, there were just concerns about moving forward. So they held at this time. I am not aware at this time of any school in Sacramento County that's a public school that has gone after a waiver. But that does not mean that, again, with board direction and these steps, that we would not be taking the steps, I mean, we could be taking the steps, and we are, to get those elements in place. It's just, there has been no waiver at this time submitted. Once, if, if we were to submit a waiver to Sacramento County Public Health, they need, we, we need then to give them about two weeks before we could start. And we would be working with county public health all along the way on that. Know that our plan right now for what we know we can do, which would be the on-campus small cohort groups, that once we are more solid with what that can look like, then we will be working with Sacramento County Public Health regarding the procedures and protocols before we would start that in October or November. Before we would start that in October or November, along again with working with our employees. And our unions to do that.
Thanks. Another thing, I kind of heard a rumor today that a private school in Gault is gonna open up on a waiver. I don't know if you guys have heard that.
I have, I have not, not, not in Gault, but maybe others have.
The Gault Adventist School or something, yeah.
Okay.
So a lot of private and Catholic schools have gotten waivers, but. I don't think I've seen a unified or an elementary school that should get one.
Thanks, John. So is it like, just, is it easy, an easier process for these private schools to get that waiver? Approved than it is for a unified or a regular school district to? To do the same? Cause that's what it sounds like, just cause it seems like. From everything I'm hearing and reading in the papers and everything and watching on the news. That a lot of the private schools in the county are getting these waivers.
Yeah.
Smaller numbers, I, smaller numbers, I guess, you know, I think. I think the private school here in Gault is probably less than fifty students, I think. I don't know, I haven't checked C beds, but. Lot of the private schools are, you know, they're not, they don't have three thousand plus students like we do.
Yes. That's all I am right now.
I'm very interested as far as small group cohorts. Are we in the process then of developing a plan? I mean, I guess my question is, what is that going to look like? Because I would think at some point, I mean, you know, initially we developed plans over the summer based on. Our vision of what we saw and then things have changed and, and now we're looking at other conditions where. Things like childcare, small group cohort, you know, cohorts for high needs learners are now things that we can possibly do. So one of my suggestions is that we, you know, we either modify or we incorporate that. Into our overall vision, you know, the back to school plan. Because I think it's important that we have plans for that in place. Yeah, so. So yeah, my big question is where is the plan or where are we at as far as that plan?
Yeah, let, let me start and then I would like our, our directors to. To provide information in, in some of the ideas and ways that. You know, it, you know, what it could look like. One is that, is that we. We asked our administrative team to provide us with the percentage of, of children that. Fit into high needs categories in terms of the numbers, numbers of children right now that. Need extra support. So we could get a sense for the groups that could come back, where, where is the greatest need? Is it, you know, are there patterns across the district? And then what we, what we have done is it's been more with our administrative team at this point. But again, we are working with both unions and discussion about this as well in terms of how to approach this. And I'll share some of the ideas that, that we got. One is that the state does state, state does provide guidance to the state that the priority. Of student groups, it's not a requirement also to do this. It is not a requirement, but again, that the priority should start with children who receive special education services. Should start there. And then looking at other student groups such as children who are English learners. Children who, again, for, for different reasons and conditions are just. You know, the distance learning is just really causing learning loss. So some of the initial discussion, and then I was gonna turn it maybe to Donna here in terms of. Cause I think there was a special education teacher group that met to provide some ideas of how it, it might work. Is that in speaking to our administrative team, the thought was that perhaps. In addition to looking at children receiving special day class services for special ed. That we may be looking to start with our little ones, with our young children. Maybe TK three, a certain percentage because of the reading and language development that is. Very challenging in a distance learning environment. I mean, that was some of the initial, initial feedback. The other part too is, is trying to get a sense, and this is where I, I think a. Survey would be helpful and I, I do think that there's one that's out there that. But we may want to do one district wide to get a sense for teachers and staff. That would want to support on-campus learning in small groups. Aside from some survey questions specifically for waiver as well. But I, Donna, I, I know that Cole G facilitated a session that was, I think we had some really good involvement there. Would you speak to our board about what the thought was with special education and some of the feedback we've gotten so far? And you're muted.
Muted, I thought I unmuted myself. It was actually initiated by our. Special day class, SDC. It was initiated by their, by the teachers. And we had our, all of our SDC teachers were there. From the elementary TK, pre-K through grade six. And, you know, it was, it was informal, but they were, they were really just brainstorming and looking at ideas and the best way to serve the children. I think what, what, what was really clear was they just felt that was imperative that. Our children with the, with the highest needs needed to be back on to campus. Some of their ideas were, knowing that your cohort cannot be more than sixteen total people. That could be fourteen children with two adults, but no more than sixteen. And we know in our SDC classes, sometimes it's one instructional assistant for every three, four or five children. So what they thought was, they, the consensus was they'd like to serve their children on campus eight hours per week. Most of them could be served in two groups because our classes, most of the SDC classes. The majority don't go over sixteen children. They could serve them in two groups, two, two days per week for four hours each. So for example, a Monday, Wednesday, a Tuesday and Thursday. But it would be for four hours and they felt like the morning would be the best time. But again, these were just teachers coming up with ideas on the best way to support their children. They talked about the use of instructional assistants. They would need an instructional assistant to support during the on-campus. But then they talked about, for those children who weren't on campus at that time, the other group. That the instructional assistant would still be able to support them. I think I would like to highlight the importance of progression and starting small because what we learn from. You know, starting with a small group of learners, thirty-five to, to forty children per school. It may give us, you know, an idea on how we might be able to serve more students. One important thing is, is that it's voluntary on the part of the teachers right now. It's voluntary and so that we need to look at, you know, what we will do for, you know. For staff that do not feel like they can be back onto campus.
And this is some of the work that. We would not be able to talk specifically about if it is related to the contract. But again, it was special education teachers who wanted to convene this meeting and provide their input and ideas. And we have, our, our teachers' union has been very responsive. You know, to meet and talk about setup meetings when we have, you know, information that's coming. And we, we met just almost, I would say that the information about the cohorts came out on Friday. And we were already able to, you know, be speaking to our, our teachers' union about new information because we do. You know, we do need to work together and, you know, determine how to best approach this, you know, on that. I wanted to clarify too that, again, with the cohorts, with the small groups of students, up to twenty-five percent of a school. That can include middle school students as well. So that unlike the elementary waiver. That would permit school-wide services when, if safety precautions and other things were met. It does not include middle school. But with the small cohort up to twenty-five percent, that can include. Small group targeted support and intervention for middle school students as well.
Correct. Well, one other thing I would recommend that is we're putting together plans, especially for small group cohorts. I think it really needs the input of all the stakeholders. Great ideas from the teachers, but I really think that we need to be talking to the parents and the families and the students. And make sure that we're addressing their needs. Obviously, well, we need, well, and like you said before, obviously, we're gonna need some kind of a survey because we need buy-in of all stakeholders. Otherwise, there's no point going forward with plans. But I really think, you know, and I think you can see it to some extent from some of the feedback we, we got on this. There are parents, there are families that have concerns about needs not, you know, needs not being met. So I think we definitely need to include them in the planning process as far as what's gonna meet their needs. And how does that look, you know, is it, is it eight hours a week? Is it? Twenty hours a week? Is it mornings? Is it afternoons? I think we're off on the right track. You definitely have come up with some great ideas. I think we just need to tie those groups together. I think, you know, we, we, you know, we definitely know. What, what's coming from, from the one side, but, you know, I think parents. Definitely need to have some input on that, especially parents of special needs children.
Thank you.
Good points and good discussion. Is there anything else from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to learn a little bit more about. Kind of where we're at with pupil learning loss. Obviously, there's a section in here. Addressing that and looking at, doing different formative assessments and, and. And other types of. Of assessments and, you know, I'm just kind of wondering. You know, do we have a pulse on kind of where, where we are or where our students are at? Maybe understanding the impact of learning loss since, you know, since March?
Again, I'll start with this and then I'll segue to Cleo on this is that, you know, part of the, the initial. Reach that we made to our school district administrator was for them to, you know, think about learning loss also. When they were giving us a sense for students and their needs and who we may want to prioritize. And while we didn't have state testing last spring. We were able, we, we have been starting with some type of assessments for our school district right now. And Cleo, I'm gonna, could you talk to the board about the assessments that are being given and what we know at this time?
So something that has started and we continue to do is. In regards to reading, early reading, we are giving the district reading assessments. To kids in TK three, trying to find out where they are and comparing. Those results to how they left last spring. We haven't completed all the assessments, so at this time I couldn't give you an overall feel of where the, the children are at. And the intermediate grades in middle school, it's more in the form of screening. We're still working on building relationships. We're working on formative assessment. So not a whole lot of diagnostic right now, John, or obviously not summative because we haven't taught enough to give a. A summative assessment, but we're looking at, at AR tests. We're looking at Lexia. We're looking at reading plus. We're looking at Khan. Pretty soon we'll be able to have some data on Guru. So we're still at a point where we're gathering. Data on where the children are and how we're gonna place them in reading groups. How we're going to break them up based on map gaps. We have children that left very high and are still very high, so we need to think about ways to. Expand and, and continue with their growth. So it's, it's a little bit early right now. I might have some more detailed information for the board. The next time we meet, but at this time, we're still in the process of. Of completing assessments and screenings.
Thank you.
Cleo, I have a question about that. Does that go with also our Glee program? Along with our students that are just doing distance learning?
I'm gonna turn that over to Donna. She probably has more information on Glee, Gracie, than I do.
Okay. You know, for our Glee, our Glee teachers are each associated with, with a homeschool. For most cases, it's the school they, where they were teaching last year. And the children are the ones that are assigned to the, the Glee teacher's school for that year. But the Glee teacher, they are following all the same assessment schedules and testing as all of our other teachers in the district. Simply that when we do move to on-campus instruction. The, the Glee Academy teachers will continue to. Will continue to do the distance learning, the home learning, you know, for the rest of the year.
Because the children, it's like about a hundred and seventy-five children would not return to on-campus learning.
Correct.
Right, I'm just wondering where, if it's the same or different with testing. And the reason is, I know more than one student that has like, say, started Glee in seventh grade and they've like already progressed and been moved up to eighth grade math. But you don't hear too much of that on, you know, the distance learning side. So I'm just wondering if there's. You know, the same standards or, you know, two completely different. I don't wanna say types of learning. I'm kind of at a loss for words of what I'm trying to say.
You know, Grace, I can, can answer that though. It's, it's not different standards. But one thing that for our students in seventh and eighth grade. What the, the advantage I would say that they have in this long-term relationship of a year is. They have two teachers. They have a language arts and social studies teacher. Then they have a science and math teacher. And the math teacher, for example, I believe in seventh grade, we have approximately thirty-seventh graders. Eighth graders, a little bit smaller, but she is working with those children for not only math, but also science. And so she's really getting to know them and building relationships. And if students are moving between math groups. It's because she's teaching those math groups. And, and it's almost like small group instruction where you know when to move a child up to the next level if needed. So she's just able to address their needs because, because she has them for, for longer during the day.
No, thank you for that clarification. Any other board members? No?
I think so much of this is just, you know, holding pattern, right? Obviously, a lot of us. You know, wanna see in-person instruction back. It's, I don't know if you're aware, but the CSU's. They're going online, you know, next semester as well. So it's a. Kind of interesting where different educational institutions are, are going here and. I think it's just a waiting game. I, you know. And, you know, I really appreciate the work that's put into this L cap. I think it's, you know, to what degree do we understand? Modify, you know, what learning expectations look like. I think for us. To the degree we kind of understand where our students are at. And how we can best serve them in, in this alternative delivery of. Of instruction, I, you know. That's, you know, that's what, what I'm interested in, you know, moving forward and just as much as we have a handle or. You know, just staying in touch with people, you know, students and parents and. You know, as time goes on, you know. you know, as time goes on, I, you know, would like to hear a report, assuming that we're still doing this come October. Maybe, well, you know, come, come October, you know, and what does it look like? Because I know with our yard instructors, you know, their duties have kind of shifted. We have other people that are shifting and, and providing levels of support and be curious to see what, you know, how that's worked out.
No, that's a very good point. I did see that about the universities. And, you know, it's interesting because it's hard to explain to people, you know, it's not about, we don't want our children back in, in the classroom. You know, I get that, well, daycares are open, why can't schools? Well, there's maybe 12 children in a daycare versus 300 students on campus. And then we go to the universities where there's thousands of students on campus. So it should be interesting how everything plays out in the next few months.
Yeah.
Hopefully for the best.
I know people are chopping, chopping, there, you know, people are chopping. I could tell you in, in my job that, you know, I met with school districts from Orange County, you know. And I can tell you, September 21, you know, that's, they're, they're looking, a whole bunch are looking, you know, to go back and the same could be said for some of the school districts I talked to in Riverside. So, you know, I, I know people are really anxious, but we have to follow whatever protocols are, you know, set before us, so. Do appreciate the, the efforts from, you know, superintendent, you know. I, I know that she's trying to push to get this waiver going. As all of our colleagues from Sac City over to Elk Grove to Paulson Corredova, you know, when talk to the school board members, I think we all want to, you know, see it, but in a very, you know, safe, as safe as we can do it and without the tracing. It's, it's not, you know, it's not feasible, it's not doable, so.
Right. That is very true. Anything else from the board, the district cabinets?
If I could share this, just in terms of some of the next steps, well, one is that we, we have already made some adjustments to the plan that, that was in the packet based on the feedback that we got. And we will bring the plan back for board approval at the September board meeting. I think part of what I, I'm looking at for next steps would be given the progression of what we're looking at this fall and feedback is, is that we would work to prepare another survey that would go out to all employee groups and parents and, and possibly students also. That would lend itself to getting a pulse for looking at on-campus learning. Not only with small cohorts, but what could support a waiver if that's what we will need, would need to do. If that's the direction the board would want us to go in. The other aspect with next steps is that just really getting more specific about what a plan for small cohorts, cohorts of students could look like at our elementary and middle school students. And then being ready to provide information to our board at the September board meeting about our progress with that. Along with, again, the war that we're doing with our unions who have been, all that they're doing, not only at work and private, in their personalized, but, you know, they've stepped up to be at that union table and, and they are problem solving with us too. We're just keeping all those things moving, along with communicating, as I'm hearing board members too, with other superintendents, employees of other districts to see just, you know, how people, what ideas are out there for moving forward safely. With the goal of getting more children, getting our kids on campus when we're ready and it's safe.
I want, you know, with that, you know, I really wanted to commend not only the district leadership, but really your work with GFA, you know, with our teachers' union. You read it in the papers and what's going on with Sac City. It's, it's a little bit of a travesty in the fact that, you know, that they're having a hard time getting on the same page. And as tough as these times have been, our teachers' union and our classified, as well as, you know, district leadership is, has really come with the same end goal in, in mind. And I really do appreciate that. It's often easy to, to overlook, so, you know, thank you for that.
Again, our unions have been working very, very hard and it's not easy and hard discussions. And again, if we can keep, keep, not, not just keep those, keep that work going, you know, we're going to get through this to a better place.
I think, and also, you know, you talked about, you know, developing some type of implementation plan and it is going to be interesting to see how that shakes out because you, as you kind of alluded to, you are going to have, in terms of individuals' comfort level, you know, some students from some classes really want to get back into the classroom, but there's some teachers that are in those classes that are, you know, maybe not so much. And what degree do we scale it or scaffold it to, to accommodate folks? It's going to take some, you know, take some time and, and some planning, some lead the year, the district's looking into that.
Yep. You know, and the, the continuity plan does, I think, use the term unique, like how we're serving unique needs of, of our, the children that we serve of our students. And there are unique needs of our employees right now who are very committed, but in a pandemic are, are facing some very unique challenges in terms of being able to work in the way that they did in February. It just, it's very, very difficult. And I think that's the aspect of, of wanting to work together with our unions to support, you know, our staff and move forward for children. Because again, some very, very unique needs and just even with the unique needs, what, what employees have been willing to do wherever they're working from. Whether they're working from home or, or at a school district location. Okay, anyway, so thank you everyone tonight.
No, thank you. And thank you all for the hard work on this. And yeah, I just want to give a shout out to all of our educators and teachers because I saw firsthand yesterday after the school hours, during office hours, exactly how hard our teachers work to support our, our, our children. And it was amazing. And the flexibility they're allowing our students is also amazing. So everyone's working very hard. Thank you very much.
And I see that, I, I thank you so much for sharing that about our, our teachers. I saw that we have a, a new video clip that's out there that our Bright Future Learning Centers, we have a a way that our families can sign up to check out books. And, and in a way it's somewhat modeled after Mary, what Mary Nellorance Library in the city of Galt is doing. So that is rolling out right now along with our meal services. And I know Lois Yon, I, I, I know that we've been looking at food services because I think in our region, I've shared this with, with Lois Yon this morning, that meals across our region and maybe part of it's due to air quality, hasn't been, you know, what it, what it has been. And, and you've got a survey in process, I think, for food services right now with parents?
We do. We just started handing it out today. It's just a, a half-page sheet asking them three choices. Would they like to pick up their meals every day, twice a week, or once a week? We've had a little bit of feedback that some families might want to go back to just a one-day-a-week pickup like we were in the spring, but we're, we're not sure how many really feel that way. And so our food service staff, as parents or families are picking up food this week, they're giving them the survey and asking them for their feedback. And that will determine if we make some changes or not with our meal pickup. But we are down by about half, about half of our families or less, half less than we were in the spring for meals right now. So I'm not, not too sure why. But we will, hopefully this feedback will guide us in the right direction.
Going off the food service thing, I, I've, I've seen a lot of, on social media. It's the same kind of arguments as before, like people aren't sure when they can come and pick their food up, when they can't come and pick it up. Somebody, I've seen a few complaints where they've got multiple children, they don't know when they can go and pick up your food. And I, I know the information's there. It's from like 11 to one, unless it's the middle school. For some reason, it doesn't seem like they're getting that information. My second one is, how about the, the students that live like out, out, out city limits? Where the kids who get bussed in, how, how, how are the food services working for them?
We are delivering meals to about, between about 15, 20 families. We're delivering meals. And so anybody who's requested a, a delivery of meal, we are providing that service for them.
Okay, so there's, all right, that's, there is that option that they can have.
Yes, our bus drivers are, are delivering meals. And so in, in some cases, we've had a teacher reach out saying, I heard from this family, they need meals delivered. In some cases, they've just called the district office and asked for the, the meal service, or they've directly called transportation and asked for that. But we do have bus drivers that are, are doing it and we have more that can, so we're not turning anyone away.
Yeah, and, and I heard that Horizon Church is offering like, during the week, offering like a place for the students to go. And I've heard that food service is delivering meals there for the students. So that's, that's a great option as well.
Okay, is everybody frozen? Are we, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It just went quiet there for a minute and I didn't know if everyone was, was frozen. All right, so any final thoughts?
No, looks like we lost Tom, but no.
No, he's there.
Oh, yeah, oh, there he is, okay.
Yes, I'm not sure why it did. President Molson, I, I'm not sure why. I, I know that you would, did you, any, any other public comment? Did you, anyone raise?
No other public comment at this time. Okay, so I guess if there's no more, there's no public comment and no more discussion from the board, we can adjourn.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.